All right, well hello and welcome to the January McComb Park Board of Commissioners meeting. And as always, oh wait, before we start with the approval of the agenda, I'd like to state that there will be two items that we're going to take off the agenda, item number seven and item number 11. With that said, is there a motion to approve?
Make the motion to approve.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, with the agenda stands approved. All right, consideration of an action on the minutes from the December meeting. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions? And guys remember where that's at in the, under the, is it packet?
It's minutes.
Minutes, oh yes, minutes folder. Hey, imagine that, minutes folder, man.
It's high-tech stuff, man.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded for the approval of the minutes. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, and the minutes stand approved. All right, we are up to bills and transfers and monthly financial statements. Commissioner Hamm, please.
Thank you. And for December, the ending of our fiscal year, I'd like to report for the consolidated fund that the cash on hand at the end of the month was $497,333 and some change with $405.692, $692 in capital projects, $41,641 in savings, and the dedicated funds still had $50,000 in it. Overall, for the month, we ended $22,024 better than the budget. Overall, we ended 2019 $205,049 better than the budget. In our general fund, we ended December with $363,820 and some change, cash on hand, and 300 of that, $361,134 was in general fund, and the $2,685 was in savings. Overall, for the month, this is $4,863 better than the budget projections. We ended the year $76,535 better than what our budget expectations were. The corporate account, we ended the year $35,398 above the budget projections. For recreation, overall, we ended the month $1,126 better than budget and $740 better than the budget for the overall 2019 year. Lakeview, for the month, ending December, $690 better than budget. For 2019, we were $5,369 ahead of budget projections. Ball four, we ended the month $38 better than budget. And overall, for the year ended, we were $4,480 below the budget expectations. Special rec accounts, we ended $3,093 better than budget. The program in advance, for the year, we ended $2,939 better than projections. For the Special Olympics for 2019, $236 better than projections. The non-activity parts of the budget, we ended 2019 $1,141 better than the budget projections. Moving on to the police account, monthly expenses, ended $1,096 more than expected. For the year, we ended overall $1,031 less than budget. Finally, for the payroll accounts, we ended the month $1,705 more than budget. However, for the year, we ended $34,185 less than the budget projections. So overall, the budgets pretty much in line.
All right.
I'd like to apologize to Commissioner Hamm for the flurry of activity over here as I tried to find a socket to charge this fancy iPad that the district bought us.
Loaned.
Loaned.
From districts.
Loaned.
We didn't buy them iPads.
That's right.
I was just wondering how she was going to respond to that.
All right, well, thank you, Russ. Do we have any questions for Commissioner Hamm? All right, if there are no questions, a motion to approve the bills and transfers and the monthly financial statements.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call, or a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Weiss?
Aye.
Commissioner Hemingway?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamm?
Aye.
Commissioner Edwards?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache?
Aye.
All right, so bills and transfers and the monthly financial statements stand approved as published. All right, it looks like we do not have anyone for the open presentations to the commissioners. So we'll move on to the president's report. I would just like to take this time to honor the legacy of the late Valencia Pettigrew. During her time as commissioner of the McComb Park Board, she worked to ensure that our community offered a wide variety of activities and programs and that those were accessible to everyone. And that we will continue to honor her legacy as we move forward and will be forever grateful for her efforts in bettering our community.
May I add something to that?
Absolutely.
I knew Valencia when she was a graduate student in the Recreation Park Tourism Administration Program at Western. She was always a highly motivated introspective student. She was a very gracious person. The word lady often sounds out of place these days, but Valencia was a true old-fashioned lady. She carried herself with genuine dignity and grace. And though she might be surprised at times, since we did not always agree on matters before the board, she might be surprised to hear me say it, but I shall miss her terribly.
Okay, let's move on to the director's report, please.
Okay. So the new year has hit us with a flurry, not to make a joke about snow, but it seemed appropriate. We didn't come into the new year slowly at all, it's been run, run, run. So I appreciate the staff and their willingness to run right alongside with all the different crazy ideas that we have coming out of the park district. So our newest initiative, which some of you may have heard about, some of you may have been hit up about recently, is Be the Change. This is our eco-conscious initiative that we are introducing into the community. It is coming to the public as in the McComb Park District initiative. It is our hope by the end of the year that this is a resounding community effort. So we are creating media packets that we can provide business owners who get involved and they can use the same color schemes, the same marketing pieces with their logo on it. The park district, we're not looking for, I mean, some recognition would be nice, of course, but we're not looking for it to be our initiative, we want McComb to get credit for this. So we are doing, we are starting with an evaluation of our daily operations. As I mentioned before, we've retrofitted all of our fixtures, they're all LED, energy efficient now. We, I mean, we're looking through everything, from lights to reusable K-cups, we don't do that anymore. To, we are only buying 100% recycled paper. We are evaluating every aspect of our operations and seeing how can we be more eco-conscious with our, with how we do business. So we feel this is a, we, being the staff, feel this is a good, a good initiative for the park district to be a motivating business behind, you know, us pushing it. It makes sense, it fits our mission, it's what we're trying to do. So several businesses have come on board with taking part with us, whether that be as just a changemaker, which is one level, where they make one change, and we celebrate that with them, they get a spot on our website, they'll get a little plaque that says Proud to be a changemaker, or they can be a partner in change, which we invite them to host an event. Just one event for the year during a month that makes sense for them with the different topics that will be focused on throughout the entire year. For example, I think February is recycling, or April is plant a tree. We try to match the themes with larger things that are going on in the year. So they host an event, we will provide them, again, with the media packet, we'll put their event on our calendar, we'll put it up on social media, help them promote it. So especially for new business owners, it's a great way to get your business out as a, you know, big-picture business, but also, you know, you get your business out there. And we hope, again, long-term, it becomes a city or community-wide initiative and we can encourage people that making one small change can go a long way. So that's been our main focus over the last couple of weeks that we've been back, but we've been working on developing this for the last four or five months. Another new for the park district, I have brought on a new staff, Kara Sahagan. She just recently graduated from Western's RPTA department as our development coordinator. There's some areas in our district where there is a gap that I believe she has some strong experience in, and if not strong experience, strong connections with people who can help her develop these different areas of focus. So strraft training and evaluation, she's developing a new training program, she's calling her Second Mile Employees. So she will standardize our orientation program for seasonal staff and develop an ongoing evaluation program for our management to use. She's also going to be working on fund development, the main focus of that being on grants, which would be one of the areas that she's not entirely versed on, but she's got a lot of great connections and I trust her motivation to be able to get the job done. And she's also going to continue to help the district develop community collaborations and partnerships. We've done a great job of doing that on our own, but it's nice to have somebody else to come in and help us continue to maintain those partnerships. And then she's also going to help us with data collection, something that we've started talking about over the last year or so, making data-driven decisions. Having a way to collect that data would be lovely, and having somebody who can spare some extra time to do that for us would be fantastic. So those are some of the things Kara's going to be taking on as development coordinator. That's obviously not exclusive duties, but, you know, other duties as assigned is at the bottom of all of our job descriptions. So happy to have her on board. We've been digging into the budget, Chris and I have gone through and done the first correction, so he's putting the final touches on that, hope to go through it again after I get back from my PRA. Starting to go through the budgets with each of the staff to make them aware of where they're at for the year. I standardly do, standardly? Is that a word? It is standard for me, to do a management training with our supervisory staff in January. I've moved that to February because of how much we've had going on so far this month. But I will be doing that in February. I've already mentioned the state conference, we're very excited to be going up to Chicago and getting the education that IPR and IAPD strive to provide us. And looking forward to the awards luncheon, Representative Noreen Hammond will be joining us at our lunch table, so excited to be hosting her and having that opportunity to bond with her. She's been a great advocate for us at the state. You may remember from our audit that Greg Butler mentioned this was going to be his last, or that last year was his last year doing the audit for us. We've been spending the last four months trying to find a new firm to do so. The prices that they are giving us are astronomical compared to what Greg has been charging us. And our attempts to try to find competitive firms, we've ran out, not ran out of time, but we were just going to have to settle, and it's not really what I like to do. So I called Greg and I talked him into doing one more year for us. So Greg Butler is going to do one more year for us. He's also going to assist us in selecting the next firm to do our audit so that we make sure that they're providing us the service that we need at a cost that makes sense. So thanks to Greg Butler for signing on for one more year. And then for programming, if you want to do a ceramics program with Natalie Shelley, you have to sign up like a year and a half in advance. This woman is crazy. I mean, we cannot, we cannot keep spots open for people who would even like to experience her class. They're gone as soon as we open them, so, which is great. It's a great problem to have, and we're thrilled that people are so engaged with her programs, but just so you know, we have a rock star in the ceramics studio currently right now, putting on a class that is full. But we're thrilled about that response from the community. Daddy Daughter Dance is coming up February 21st, registration for that is open. They did a Greatest Showman theme this year, so that, we hope everybody hops online or calls Sharon, you can sign up that way. In our discussions about Be the Change and environmental sustainability, and also Little House on the Prairie now being on Amazon Prime. It's just how ideas come about, y'all. We are hosting a new program at Lakeview Nature Center called Lakeview Prairie School. A new trend in education, in nature education, you may have heard of as four schools, where they immerse children into the natural environment and do classroom settings in that manner. Well, we're just making a Midwestern Illinois version and calling it Prairie School, with the potential of a Little House on the Prairie festival coming in June. But we can't call it Little House on the Prairie, but that's what it's based around. So we're going to be working with some vendors out of, what's that place in Missouri? Hannibal, right outside Missouri.
Sure.
Hannibal, there's the, I'm sorry, it's been a long day. There's a lot of vendors who do blacksmithing, or candle making, or just old-fashioned engagements that we think the public would really enjoy at this festival. So that's coming our way in June, but also excited about the Prairie School. The first one is happening January 31st at 9:30 a.m., it's a 45-minute program. This is kind of tailored to stay-at-home moms or homeschool groups. You know, anybody's welcome, but this is, if anybody's wondering why at that time, we're trying to reach a different demographic that we haven't had a lot of tap in, so. And then, last but not least, I've had a couple of discussions with Russ on different options, but we are in need of new leadership for the adult softball league again. So if anybody's interested in running the adult softball program, please reach out to me. If anybody knows of somebody, again, Russ has given me a few people to try to get ahold of, but this is not something that the park district can take on, unfortunately. We do not have manpower to do it. So we need an outside individual or agency to take on this program, or unfortunately, we might have to go a year, year or two without it until we can find leadership. So, but somebody usually seems to step up at the last minute, so I'm hoping that I get it for this year. There you go.
So are any questions or comments that you'd like to make to Director Lenz? I came up with the title, I knew, instead of Little House.
Oh, what'd you go?
Lake House on the Prairie. Lake House, because it's Lakeview.
That makes me feel like I'm sitting on a beach somewhere.
Well, you know.
Does that sound beach vibe to you, guys?
Not a bad idea.
I mean, I wouldn't mind. Lake House on the Prairie.
Lake House on the Prairie.
Ayo!
There you go.
It'd be a marketing nightmare. Love it, then you vote. I'm going to tell her, no.
All right, well, as I had stated earlier, we're going to skip item number seven and move on to number eight, which is consideration and action on veterans, Veterans Park Youth Baseball Field Lighting bids. It's finally happened. Oh, I don't have any of this stuff.
Okay. So for the...
You have the paperwork.
I do. For those who were not able to attend, I'm not going to read all of the numbers that we went over. I'll just go over the two, well, I'll do four, the first four. So the lowest bid came in from Barton Electric. They are the company that did the girls' diamonds, so we do know them. They know that they're going to do a quality job, they did it, of course, last time. Their base bid for HID lighting for one field was $162,000. Their base bid for LED lighting for one field was $199,000. And then, if you'll remember, for each alternate additive, I had them add in one more field, both HID and LED, for one additional HID field, so two fields lit with HID, $289,000, for two fields lit with LED, $358,000. And we had them go all the way up to four, which is way beyond our reach. Two is way beyond our reach, to be honest, but...
Could you repeat the first two numbers again?
The first two numbers, HID was $162,000.
Fifty?
$160.
Sixty.
One six-two, three zeros.
Thank you.
LED was $199,000.
One field.
So at this point, correct me if I'm wrong, but again, this Barton is the recommended bid from IMAG. We just need to decide if we're moving forward, and if we are, should we, if we will go with the HID bid or the LED bid.
What are you guys thinking?
I'd like to make a comment, I know it's not going to be popular, anytime we spend that amount of money, a lot of people are going to jump on the bandwagon, but I believe that going with the system that's guaranteed for 25 years and is the more modern system seems to make sense to me. That would be my recommendation or my motion, I guess I could actually make a motion that we go with the LED system. I know it's more expensive upfront, but I believe it will give us the best system that's available, and it will also most likely save us money down the road.
I will second Commissioner Brown.
Edwards.
Edwards, sorry, I don't know where I am. Motion for the reasons he stated.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any comments before we...
I have a comment. We do have one field out there right now, correct? Lit with HID?
We have four softball fields.
It's HID, not LED, correct?
Correct, yeah.
And isn't there a program in the future that AMRON can help us with to change the HID to LED at no initial cost?
There's a grant program, right? I don't, I do not know how much the grant is for, or how much the cost of the retrofitting is. I tried to find that information prior to this meeting and I did not get a response.
I can't hear that.
No, but there is a program out there.
That would switch the lights over?
Yeah, assist in the retrofitting.
Would the maker of the motion accept as a friendly amendment directing the director to continue to pursue investigation of the AMRON program so that as we move forward with the youth baseball fields, we are also exploring opportunities to bring the youth softball fields up towards the LED standard? Just making sure that we're not leaving that behind, forgetting it.
Mm-hmm, I can do that.
Yes, sir. Acceptable, you?
I don't know if it's easier for the president, secretary, and the board as a whole. We can either, we can retract and remove my proposed, or we can amend it, whichever is the easiest.
Yeah, I'm not afraid of this, a friendly amendment, but I think it's in the spirit of what you're trying to do.
But I will gladly make the motion for any amendments that need to be done.
As I agree with you, in sitting in on the bid opening and then in the conversation that took place immediately afterwards, the IMAG people pointed out that we've used these folks at Barton before. They're the people that did the lighting, they are a family-operated, as the guy who, I guess the FCOM dad said the last time, he could guarantee that the labor would be efficient because they were his kids. And one of the things I think is important to realize here is not just that the LED lighting is, in fact, superior lighting generally and also has a longer useful lifespan, but that if we put in HID lighting now at the youth baseball fields and then want to go to LED lighting later, we may wind up having to pay people for pulling cable to support the LED, take out the HID, put in the LED. We incur a double cost.
I'd just like to make one comment. I had talked to the president earlier, and the comment was made that HID is pretty much an antiquated type of system that attempting to get parts and possibly even service at a later date might be very difficult, if not impossible, which would be...
It's, yes, and it's, I know that they're already running into that on campus at Western, because we're slowly making that change to LED, but there are still a lot of places on campus with the HID-type system. It is, it's becoming quite a hassle, to say the least.
And the motion that's out there is for just one set of lights, right? We're not talking about two at all.
Correct.
That's way too out of the budget at this point in time, so...
Two LED fields.
Okay, so we're looking at one LED. I guess we would need to reread the motion, make sure that what we're voting on, because I know we've had discussion, I too attended the meeting that was given and agree with the comments about the HIDs being, or the, yeah, being... or the, yeah, uh being outdated and they're moving to LED lighting systems. And in the long run, that is what most communities are going to because of the cost savings down the road. So I would not have major issues with that.
For people that are worried about what this means in terms of um the kind of scheduling that we might do, because one of, we know one of the hopes is that we can eventually begin to develop and attract uh tournament play, things like that. Um I think we have a fair number of our PTA students in the audience today. And if you've taken programming, I should probably throw this one straight at you, but we are talking, we currently have three fields that are suited for uh tournament play. Uh the fourth field out there is a smaller field for the younger kids. And if you take an eighteen tournament for a weekend, you, with three fields, you can play three games on those three fields, say in an afternoon, and the fourth game on one field under the lights. And now we're to the semifinal and we can easily accommodate those so that eventually we wind up with a championship game uh under the, under the lights. If we're talking about marketing, we schedule the uh local McComb entry uh under the lights in the first round. People come in and see that, um and we, we, we have that advantage. So it'd be nice to be able to do all the games under the lights or whatever. But I think we do not lose too much leverage for scheduling with just the one field.
It definitely helps scheduling, that's for sure.
Yeah.
So based off of the original motion, just to uh reiterate it, um uh Commissioner Edwards stated that uh move motion to go with the LED uh system with an amendment of uh um asking Doc, uh Director Lenz to, uh must've called you Doctor. Wow.
Step up.
Ma'am. Uh Director Lenz to uh research.
Options for, options for softball.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Awesome. So with all that, do we?
May I request a roll call vote, please? I second that motion.
Well, you did second that.
Yeah, that's a move.
Okay. All right, so with that, um is there any other uh conversation questions that we have at this time? Okay, uh let's go with a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hemingway.
Aye.
Commissioner Hammond.
Aye.
Commissioner Edwards.
Aye.
Commissioner Gammage.
Aye.
Commissioner Weiss.
Aye. All right, we have uh moved on to the next step there and. Let there be light, yes. Okay, where are we at on the agenda?
What's the next item?
Oh, yes. Um consider, uh consideration and action on uh election of OMA and FOIA officers. Let me get my notes here. Uh so uh just a reminder to the board um that we are required by law uh to designate someone who's responsible uh to the open meetings, uh meeting issues and items that are related to the freedom of information. And uh uh in years past, it's always been the director that has been the OMA officer and the business manager that handled all the um uh FOIA. Um so uh I would like to move, yes.
Do we have assistant?
Yeah, we act as each other's assistants, so I.
Oh, yes, okay, yes.
In case somebody's not present.
Yeah.
So with that, uh I'd like to move um that we request, or move to elect Director Lenz as the sitting OMA uh officer and uh business manager, uh Chris Frankenha- Frankenhy- Hauser.
Frank Hauser.
Frank Hauser, Frank House.
Frankenstein, is that what you were about to say, wasn't it?
Yeah, that's exactly what I was about to say, as the, uh sorry, Chris, uh as the FOIA officer.
I will second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Uh uh roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hammond.
Aye.
Commissioner Edwards.
Aye.
Commissioner Gammage.
Aye.
Commissioner Weiss.
Aye.
Commissioner Hemingway.
Aye.
Director, I'm sorry, I do have a question. I know it's, we've already voted.
Sure.
But are you willing to accept that role, like this is the question?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Chris is as well. He didn't tell me that, then.
This is kinda housekeeping task that we do every year.
Yeah.
Ever since I've been on the board, you've been elected officers by default because we're such a small operation of a district.
And it makes sense because we're, we're there every day.
Right.
Well, we're larger than some, but.
Yeah, absolutely.
It makes, yeah, like Rachel said, makes sense to point those positions to those individuals.
Yeah.
Big positions.
Yeah, they really should be staff positions, not board positions. Absolutely.
All right, uh moving on to item number ten, uh resol- Yes, Resolution Twenty dash one, uh reduction of single-use plastics and carbon footprint. Um I'm going to pass this over to Commissioner Hemingway.
Okay. Um this is uh what has been pushed down the line several times because of lengthier meetings uh earlier. Uh you heard the, the director talk earlier about the interest of the district in taking a leadership role in uh environmental issues in the community. Uh what we have is in the uh Resolution Twenty dash one is a, a first step in that. Um you have it in front of you uh for the people here and uh out there in um the ether somewhere. Uh the resolution summarizes the commitment of the district to uh environmental uh action. Environmental education is part of our uh mission. We really want to be a green district in all the meanings of that word. So uh what this uh resolution calls for is the reduction of single-use plastics and of the district's overall uh carbon footprint. Stakes that as a priority and makes it uh an issue for all aspects of our operations. The director is uh asked to ensure that employees, volunteers, uh understand this as a priority and incorporate it into their uh job duties uh accordingly. Uh ask the director to prepare and submit to the, this board a report on the presence of single-use plastics, and I guess the big example of that is straws these days. And um in our operations and programs and then uh the district's current carbon footprint, we actually have never done that kind of survey before. It's time that we do. And to do that no later than six months from uh this meeting. Uh along with that report, the director is asked to uh submit to the board an overview of steps taken or planned to limit and reduce the presence of single-use plastics and our overall uh carbon footprint. So with that, um I'd be glad to ask, answer any questions about the drafting of it, but uh I'm hoping it's relatively clear, you know. Again, it's been part of our mission. We just have never formalized steps to be taken.
Any questions or comments?
I will move the motion.
Okay, thank you. Is there a?
Isn't that a wonderful thing?
Second.
Move the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Do we uh, we do not need to do a roll call for this, so um uh all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, has passed. Um awesome.
All added to my to-do list.
Excellent.
Sorry. I'm excited about it.
No, this is good, this is really good.
I'm excited about it.
Okay, and uh we're gonna move, skip uh item eleven and uh now uh number twelve, uh open commissioner presentation and discussion of future agenda items.
I would like to make a suggestion if I could. We have traditionally seated commissioners up here by seniority. And I'm wondering whether sometimes that doesn't have kind of a stultifying effect on things because the people who know each other the most are sitting each other, you know, by each other. And I'm wondering whether, if we went to a system, absolutely neutral system of just using last names and seating alphabetically with the president still sitting here, obviously, next to the director.
Oh, I was hoping I was gonna be out in the car.
We can do that, we can do that.
Yeah, in front of Hemingway. Brown would be next to.
So you would be at the very end.
Mm-hmm.
I moved to proof. Oh, no, sorry.
She's gonna start her car one day, and I held a surprise. Or did I say that on the air?
Oh, goodness.
But I'm just thinking it's sort of.
How was it developed or why was it developed, to begin with?
Well, seniority is just a traditional way of doing things. If you look at all of the uh, you know, Robert's Rules and, and all of that, everything is organized by, by seniority. And I was just wondering whether um, we've got a, a participatory group here just to do something different for the heck of it.
That's up to you guys.
But I obviously can't.
I'd be where I'm at anyway, wouldn't I?
Yeah, you're pretty much at the same spot.
Maybe.
You'd be down one seat, I think.
Um I would, I can't make it as a motion now. Uh it has to be adjourned as such.
We could put it on consideration till next time.
May I ask, could we do that, please?
Yep.
And just explore how that works to.
Where you've come up with some of his ideas, I'm very.
Really?
He's tired of very witty. I, that's what I figured, is his elbows, he means his elbows.
No, 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 it's, it's just that.
Okay.
Might be time for a change.
I'd change.
I'd change.
Don't mind it. I stay up late at night and look at, that's too bad. Come on, these ideas.
Next time, make sure you charge your iPads, 'cause I won't be there to help you.
Okay.
I do appreciate it, I.
Do we know?
I was really relieved I found it before the meeting.
Since one of the items was in particular, um number seven was removed from the um, the agenda. Do um, do we wanna have any presentation on ideas of anything? Or do you know she'll be given back to us, or?
They'll, they'll be coming in February.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Yes. Should've stated at the beginning, sorry. Phil should've.
I'm sorry, yes, I should have. My apologies, yes.
Bet you and I didn't move to the February.
Okay.
Thank you. Clarify.
Anything else uh for the open commissioner presentation?
Happy belated birthday.
Oh, thank you.
It was yesterday.
Can I make a?
Happy birthday.
Thanks.
A motion that uh we adjourn?
I will second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we stand adjourned. Thank you all very much.